I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody, for coming. Any public comments at this time? Public comments? That means comments from the publics? I see none. Okay. Thank you, sir. Actually regarding the budget legislation packets, Mr. Tenzini?
First, Mr. Chairman, we have received some comments over the past few days with respect to not cutting some of the services that were on the list of potential cuts. I'm distributing to you what those comments were and my response. By means of spoiler alert, I will not be proposing any cuts in the Council on Aging or the library here this evening. Obviously, what gets cut at the end of the day is this body's determination, not mine. For those who would just as soon go home, I'm just giving them a heads up and an early start. So what I would like to try to do is to walk the board through a set of key issues that we need to discuss. By the time we walk out of here tonight, I need to know ballot questions for, to give to the town clerk tomorrow. These are literally, for tonight, a drop dead. Diane, you already have your set there. I'm hopeful of discussing the warrant with you briefly, and I do need a short executive session for the purposes of collective bargaining. So following this, if everyone's got their packets, there are some questions that I need some answers to that will settle on what the deficit is. The first is, well, you do not need to act tonight. The matter of the insurance and benefits budget. The Insurance Advisory Committee has suggested that you accept the current platform and you accept the 7.52% increase in the rates that that would bring. In the budget, that was built upon a 6.25% increase. While I do not need to know which benefit plan you might go with and what the rate is, I do need to know if it is your intent to accept the IAC recommendation of staying with the current benefit platform and going with the 7.52% because that means I need to calculate a higher number, and that drives the deficit higher. So that is the first question I need this body to answer, Mr. Chairman.
On the 7.52%?
Yes.
We've had the book for quite a while, but I'd like to make a motion to accept the 6.25.
6.25?
Increase and not the 7.52.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? And how the 6.25 is going to impact the budget, Mr. Tenzini?
That will not. In fact, I'll discuss with you next week which of the several benefit platforms that are below 6.25 you want to settle upon. But I now know that the numbers I projected so far hold up.
Fantastic. Okay, great.
We have to vote.
So I get 6.25. A motion is second. Any other discussion? I see none. Kim?
No.
Julie?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
The next issue, Mr. Chairman, is with respect to, and I know this is going to seem a little bit odd, the capital program. In the capital program, I have proposed using the meal tax, which is about $42,000 of revenue based upon what the Department of Revenue projects. And I have proposed using the roughly $92,500 of freed-up debt from 242 Baldwinville to support the capital budget. I have not proposed using them for the operating budget. Should you wish to not apply them to the capital budget, and just to go back over this, the meal's tax would pay the annual lease payment on one new police cruiser and one one-ton pickup, three lease payments over the course of three years to pay for those. The 92.5 freed up from Baldwinville would pay the annual lease payment for six years on a new piece of apparatus to replace the, Chief, help me, 31-year-old Engine 3? Roughly 31-year-old Engine 3, which by the time you get the replacement vehicle would be roughly 32-years-old. So if, again, you don't need to vote on the capital budget tonight, but if it is your intent to not proceed along those lines, that money swings over to be available for the operating side of the budget.
I make a motion that we continue to use that money towards the CapEx.
And I'll second that. Okay, I have a motion to utilization for that funds for capital. I have a second. Do I have any other comments or questions? Discussion? Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Sir, Dana May from Groothrow.
Yes, sir.
I can't hear John.
Can you speak up a little bit? Just, can you stand up?
Will you stand up, please?
Thank you.
Dana May from Groothrow. Would the 0.75% from the meal tax be used exclusively for more than three years for the Police Department? Or would it revert to the general fund later on?
Well, the utilization of that fund is for capital for the next, at least, three years. Based on our policy, based on, well, we've talked, well, about two years. I would see it for at least three to five years myself personally, but I'm only one person, and working with the rest of the board, I think they would probably concur as well. Because, again, that fund or those dollars should be used for capital planning for the future. If that answers your question?
Yes.
Okay. At least the next two years, definitely. Okay. I have to run next year, so we'll see what happens. Anything else? I see none.
The next question is...
Hold on, Mr. Tenzini. Stand by.
My apologies. Don't mean to get ahead of things.
Yeah, stop jumping ahead. Well, you're killing me. Kim? Yes, yes. Okay. Julie?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well towards the capital. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Tenzini.
The next question does not have to do with the general fund, but it does allow me to finalize a warrant for your action next Monday evening. The budget that we submitted proposed moving the administrative assistant to 40 hours per week. Subsequently, the sewer commissioners, under some circumstances, have said they would accept 36 hours. It is clear from the other night that this issue of what the benefits are going to be and whether or not to try to craft something different for this one employee out of all town employees, we need a number. And so I need to ask this body if they are accepting the recommendation to amend the budget to 36 hours per week for the administrative assistant with a move to 40 hours per week in fiscal 2020. It leaves, yet to be resolved, the issue of the accruals, something that I have, I can't even tell you how many hours I have into this discussion. But we've got a, I made a decision point for this body. I need an answer.
Okay.
So...
Yes.
Okay, so I've gone over this notice. We've been told for over 10 years that we need to collect their bills here at Town Hall. Can we collect those quarterly bills in-house with our current staff? If we did, could we charge the sewer department for doing it? If that answer is yes, can that revenue help support our general fund budget? Could moving those collections help save the sewer users some money? Do you know how much that would cost and save to do this? Could that happen in time for this coming fiscal year? And this is my motion. I move to direct the town administrator to prepare a report on the potential costs and savings of bringing the collections of the sewer department in-house, as has been recommended by the Department of Revenue and several audit firms, and present that report to us by April 23rd.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, but to go back to your questions, can you read the first question again, please?
Can we collect those quarterly bills in-house with our current staff?
No. Go to the next question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I would disagree.
I wouldn't because the current staff would not be entitled enough to do that. I would believe that the staff member from the sewer department would have to come up to alleviate some of the pressure of the current staff.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I have to respectfully disagree.
Me, too.
Okay, we can agree to disagree then. Go with the next question.
If we did that, could we charge the sewer department for doing it? But my motion is asking him to repair a report.
I got that. I just wanted to go through the questions.
If we did that, could we charge the sewer department for doing it?
Of course, yes.
If yes, can that revenue help support our general fund budget?
Yes. Is that correct, Mr. Tenzini?
It is correct.
Okay, just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Could moving those collections help the sewer user save some money?
That, I don't know. I mean, we would have to look into that because...
That's what the town administrator would have to do?
Yep.
Do you know how much it would cost and save to do this? And that's what Mr. ...
Tenzini's going to do. So I have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? I see none. Kim?
I'm going to say no on the grounds of I think there's other things that need to be done, and I think that this currently, right now, if we move it, it's not tangible dollars that we can use to make any decision tonight.
No, I was just making Mr. Tenzini do some extra work, apparently, to figure some resources out.
So that was kind of quick on my end, so I'm going to say no, just,
I got it.
But, but I think it's a great idea. We should do it at a different time, not now. Timing's not right, so I'd say no.
Julie?
I'm going to go with Kim on that. This is not the right time, but I think it's coming in the real near future.
Great. Diane?
Yes.
Doug?
I mean, since it's just a research project, and it has been an audit issue for 10 years now to do this, I think it's worth spending a little time to get the information. So yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, your vote.
It is. Mr. Tenzini, how many hours you think that's going to take?
Six.
Six man-hours?
Assuming I have cooperation from the other staff members, I think I can do it in under six hours.
And report back to us and say, what, 30 days?
April 23rd.
Is that enough time?
I could at least provide you with a preliminary report and an estimate of how much time, if any, I need.
Is that okay with you and the motion? Okay. I vote yes then. And I will, can't wait to see it. All right, anything else on that?
And do we have to, we still have to move to...
I can tell you I do not believe this could happen in time to affect at least the front end of fiscal '19. So I do believe you still need to address the issue of whether or not...
36 hours?
You're going to go, accept 36 hours and still put down the rabbit holes on the accrued leave time and deal with that, or whether you just want to go to 40 and deal with the rabbit holes that that's going to create.
I make a motion that the AA moves to 40 hours because that is our policy.
A motion for 40 hours for the administrative assistant for the sewer department to have a second?
The motion on the floor is that we move the assistant administrator to 40 hours a week.
Right.
Up from 32, but it was originally planned to be 36.
That's correct.
So we're increasing it four hours. What's the impact of that?
What's the budget impact or the...
Yeah.
I'm sure the budget impact... The budget will be impacted by the benefit funds, I'm assuming.
It's the debating impact.
Okay.
It's the continued perseveration over something that we've exhausted hours on already.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Tenzini, is this a monetary impact or is this just a...
It's no cost to the general fund. It's about...
No cost to the general fund, no income, no nothing, right? It's just...
It's about $27.50 to the sewer fund.
Are you comfortable with a headache that this is going to bring?
It's a headache either way.
Okay, a second.
Okay, a motion, a second, for 40 hours, which will impact the sewer benefit users and funds, but from 36 to 40, so 40 is the motion. Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
I can't hear John.
When's it going to take effect? Well, we, most likely, the fiscal year. The fiscal year, correct?
Yes.
Excuse me?
January 1st.
July 1st.
No, July 1st, the fiscal year.
Assuming the budget is passed as recommended at...
Town meeting, that's correct. Any other discussion? I see none. Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Did you get that, Mr. Tenzini?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, thank you.
With that said, I'm going to ask you to turn to the packet that's called Budget Overview, fiscal '19 revised April 2nd of 2018. You will see at the bottom, and I'll walk you through how I got this, depending upon your reaction to several proposals, we start with a deficit of $97,433 for the budget as it stands at this moment.
Right.
I will then ask you to turn to the second page of your packet. Coming into tonight, the budget, as recommended and submitted on February 26th, had a surplus of $83. During the course of the budget review, we found that there had been a $1,000 error in the treasure collector's budget in importing their original request. And we received news of new taxes being imposed upon our telephone services in $1,250, which brought the $83 surplus to a deficit of $2,167. To that, we received the final budget from Monty Tech. It was $34,956 above our proposed sharing of resources of 2.5% increase.
Yep.
And we then advised you that we had found, we did not realize it, but the Narragansett Regional School does provide a payment to help offset the SRO. That should have been moved into general revenues next year. It had been kept off the book in the grant accounts. And I think the chief and I just kind of hit on this one day when we were talking about how it was being charged. Once you accept that higher assessment and you move the revenues from the grant side to the general revenue side, because we do carry now all of those wages in the budget, you come to a deficit of $5,123. When you add the assessment from Narragansett Regional School, $176,166 greater than our proposed sharing of revenues with an increase of 2.5% you get a deficit of $181,289. As you know, Mr. Chairman, when we presented the budget, we told you on this first page that we always start a budget with an allowance for abatements of 2.5% of non-excluded tax levy. That provides us a, that's where I truly believe it should be. It also provides us a level of safety while we're developing the budget. It cannot, should not, under any circumstances, go below 1.5% of that base to which you should add some tax title. And I'm glad to say that we have a little bit, it's not huge dollars, but we've had a little bit of increased activity in our work-off program this year. It's only a couple folks, but that is paid out of that. So I'm comfortable, although it's not exactly where I'd like to be, I am somewhat comfortable in bringing the allowance for abatements down to $150,000, which frees up $83,856, which reduces the deficit to $97,433. Are there any questions on how I get to that point? Because after that, it's a little bit tougher.
No.
Okay.
I'm good. Anything, yeah?
Ask questions?
No.
Any question?
So what's the deficit that we're at now?
Start, if you accept all those first things, we start with a deficit of $97,433.
And you're sure the overlay is going to come out that way?
Sorry, what?
The overlay is going to come out that way?
Yeah, I'm pretty comfortable that you can live with that as an overlay. You don't want to go much lower. Remember, three or four years out of the last seven, you have to actually raise deficits in the fall because you brought the overlay down
That's right.
too low.
That's my concern.
I'm, I'm, it's not where I'd want to be, but I'm okay.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for that?
You okay, Doug?
Right, so we're starting, we're at the point now of the $97,433.
That's the starting point.
Okay.
So let me just tell you on a couple of premises that I worked under. The first is that I tried to concentrate on cuts that would be sustainable. That is, I didn't cut anything that's just going to pop up next year. The second thing is I assumed, and we'll test that theory out in a few minutes here, that there was some appetite for an increased overlay. I assumed that if we were to close this gap through use of an override, that we would need to stick to the original override purpose, which was public safety.
Right.
And I assumed that I would propose cuts that if the override did not pass, people would recognize as that they are permanent.
And these are what you're going over right now?
And these are what I will go over next.
Thank you.
First is in the fire in the EMS. If there is no ambulance, there is not as much need for the administrative assistant. I have proposed eliminating that. On the right-hand side, wherever you see a 1, I'll go over the override sheet with you when I'm done here. That is, I'm proposing to put back with the override. An increase in the override. I propose a lump sum disallowance in this area. I propose cutting the IM responding dispatch software. You'll have to go back to old-school way of doing it, which is not horribly efficient. It's not something I'd like to do. If we are successful in obtaining the new truck for the chief, it will replace one and we can bring the maintenance cost down a little bit. If those cuts are done, that brings your deficit to $72,933. And if there are no questions on that section, I'll go on.
I got nothing. You guys have any? Kim? And Julie? All right, go ahead. Continue, Mr. Tenzini.
In the Police Department, they go above and beyond, as I think is wise in this day of litigiousness, extreme sensitivity in the encounters between our officers and the citizens that they serve. But that supplemental training does cost $13,440 and could be eliminated with an additional lump sum disallowed in that area and the elimination of the community notification system. That is $23,000, which brings the deficit down to $49,933. Again, I propose restoring those with an increase in the override. In the snow and ice account, I propose cutting it $1,500 so that it would stay flat at this year's level of $132,500. And I propose putting that back with the override plus a little bit extra. In the insurance and benefit accounts, if these labor accounts that I, up above, are in fact cut, whether they're put back with the override or not, there's approximately $1,000, give or take, which brings the deficit down to $47,433. In the insurance and benefits accounts, if you eliminate the dental insurance for retirees, saves you $13,000. We are on track to reduce the PPO from $27.50 to $2,300, which will save $8,000 and a lump sum disallow of 500. That brings you to a deficit of $25,933. In the Highway Department, I propose cutting $15,000 from the supplies account. There are several small, not to be replaced, cuts in the advisory committee, development services, and buildings and grounds, which I believe can be sustained and would leave them in no worse shape than they are this year. That leaves a deficit of $9,683 with one final LSD lump sum disallow cut in the insurance and benefits of $9,750. That leaves you with a $67 surplus. You happy to answer any questions on this? And if there are none, I'll move on to the proposed expansion of the override.
Any questions?
Again, I want to go back to those guiding principles. I stayed with cuts, assuming there was some appetite to increase the override. I stayed on public safety cuts. I stayed on cuts that were sustainable. And I frankly didn't spend, you know, trying to find 300 here, 500 there, this, that.
Right.
You've been down that road numerous times. And I preserved what I thought were the basic administration and finance resources that we needed to continue to make progress in that area.
So no questions, Mr. Tenzini?
So all these number ones are with the override?
I am proposing to put those back with the override. And if there are no questions for the moment, I will ask you to go to your third page in your packet.
Should I do?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
My proposal, Mr... My proposal, Mr. Chairman, is to increase the personnel override from two hundred thousand to two hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred. The employee support would stay the same. The purchase of service would go from forty-three to ninety to fifty thousand to ninety. Supplies would stay the same. And this would restore all of the Page Two cuts proposed in the fire department via an expansion of the override.
Okay.
On the police, the override would go from zero for personnel to fifteen thousand. From zero on purchase of service to eight thousand. That would replace all of the proposed cuts, Page Two cuts, on the, with the override.
Okay.
In the insurance and benefit accounts, that would go from a one hundred and eleven thousand, eight ninety as originally proposed. And we would restore the cuts from the, being made to the extent of twenty-two thousand dollars. And, and I'm hoping we can avoid really getting lost in the weeds because that's a two-point-two-five million-dollar budget. And I could probably recalculate it and find a thousand, two, three, depending upon which items are in and which items are out.
I got you.
I am proposing to restore the fifteen thousand dollars cut from the highway department via the override. And I'm proposing to increase snow and ice instead of the, the fifteen hundred or what we had in the original budget by sixty-six, sixteen. That is a grand total of four hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars, which is approximately ninety-four thousand dollars above, which will look suspiciously like the deficit.
Understood.
And is a cost per thousand of seventy-five cents instead of sixty cents.
Yep.
That is a cost on a two-hundred thousand dollar home of one hundred and fifty dollars instead of one hundred and twenty dollars. And on a two-hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, that is an increase of one hundred and eighty-nine dollars as opposed to one hundred and fifty. The override is, remains fixed on public safety. It is for fire services, the advanced life support ambulance, supplemental police training, the community notification system, snow and ice, and associated costs of insurance and benefits. I forgot to include a word about the highway, but I can, I can figure that out when we get to the ballot question. If there is no appetite to increase the override, or, and even if there is an appetite to do that, if there's no appetite to go to the seventy-five cents, we need to know what that number is so we can then back in and discuss how to address those cuts. Either by not including them in the, in the override or by making alternative cuts elsewhere in the budget. Okay. And the council on aging or library, that's good news, ladies. See, I got, I got at least five of them smiling. That's about as much as I think I'm probably going to get.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Tenzin? Yes?
The community notification system, is that code RED?
It is.
It is.
Yes.
Would that be TY Connect, or are you, is that something?
Well, we proposed to replace, replace code RED with Connect TY.
Right.
Either one, they.
It's going to go away. Yes, Chief.
With the, the new code RED there, if that got eliminated, what would the MIMAP teams use for notifications?
Loudspeakers.
They use that, or do they have a different software?
No, they don't have.
They have a different software, and that's a five-hundred dollar item, and
It's not the same.
We'll have to eat it someplace, we'll have to figure it out. I mean, no disrespect to anybody, but you really don't want, you know, you could get lost in the weeds on all these different combinations.
I just didn't remember if it was that or if it was a different software.
I got you.
So the difference between seventy cents and seventy-five cents is about thirty thousand dollars?
Thirty-one thousand, yes.
So public safety is not insurance and benefits for, it's twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three.
You can cut it completely if you want.
Well, I'm just saying that if you go to the public and you say this is a public safety override, okay, I'm not, you know what, I have to back off that discussion. Sorry.
Right, because those are driven by
No.
the personnel cuts.
Well, the retiree.
No, 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 no.
The retiree is not, the retiree is not strictly public safety, so there's twenty-two thousand out of this.
And that's only five thousand.
Twenty-two thousand out of this four-seventy, I suppose.
So you could do seventy. That's more palatable.
It's this body's choice. Where I can reword.
Public safety is public safety.
And the, whatever, do you want to do?
Okay, thanks, Mr. Tenzin.
You can amend the
But that's, this is.
Word into the ballot question. And miscellaneous general expenses. But that's your concern.
I mean, highway is part of public safety. What if I reword that? That's not to be replaced, building grounds is not to be replaced, development services is not to be replaced, advisory meeting is not to be replaced.
Well, I'm ready to make a motion.
Highway, that's, that's a big challenge.
Please. Don't be.
I would rather have this be a public safety override.
It is.
I'm sorry, did I miss something?
Nope. Julie, did you want to make a question for any other motion?
I do have a question as to why the insurance is on here. If this is a public safety override.
Which insurance? Julie, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
The account fifty-seven hundred, I'm just a little confused on that amount.
Where?
Right here.
I'm missing. Can I see? Oh, you're looking at which page?
Right underneath, please.
Which paper are you looking at?
The first one. Top page. It says Budget, Budget Overview FY nineteen.
This one. I need a dollar amount. Oh, that's, that's their benefits.
That's their benefits.
Oh, okay.
That's their benefits.
The way that it's worded, I'm thinking it's insurance.
The original, the original one hundred and eleven and change, which we've added a thousand is Medicare, unemployment compensation, health insurance.
And that's for all those departments? Okay. I just want to.
I'm questioning the twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three. That has nothing to do with public safety.
Where is that?
What page is it?
That's right here. This, well, mine's bigger, it's right here.
It's on the second page, I got it.
Insurance and benefits, retiree dental, PPO, that's already going down.
Yep.
That's nothing to do with public safety. Zero. And I'm just saying, public safety is public safety, and that's really all I wanted to say about that.
Okay, I got it.
How can you sell that to the community when that is not?
That's not related to the override. The override, anything that's going on the public safety override is on that sheet that says override overview FY nineteen. You're looking at the budget revisions of what he's making the adjustment to, right?
There is five percent. Twenty-two thousand of it is not strictly public safety. That's a smaller percentage than when you had a six-hundred and twenty thousand dollar, give or take, override. And less than sixty thousand was for the schools, what you called it, Narragansett Regional School District and miscellaneous general government. So if, if you have an appetite for eliminating the retiree dental, you don't have to replace that. You find some more cuts, you bring it down to seventy cents. The other way to change it is to, you know, keep it focused on public safety, but add to the ballot questions and miscellaneous general expenses.
Well, but if we took that out, that would give us a deficit then of twenty-five. And if we went with the seventy cents, instead of having a sixty-two thousand dollar surplus, we would be twenty-five less than that, correct?
If, if you, if you want to be at seventy cents, you can cut the twenty-two thousand from insurance and benefits and then find another, roughly ten thousand dollars you have to cut someplace else. Go around the budget.
Mr. Chairman?
I guess that did.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the seventy-five cents override.
I have a motion to accept the seventy-five cent override as, as on the sheet. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Do I have any discussion? I mean, is there other discussion? No, I think I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, any, okay, I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? I see none. Julie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Kim?
Yep.
And I vote yes as well. With that, Mr. Chairman,
Yes.
we need to turn our attention to the last sheet, what should have been the last sheet of your packet, which is to settle ballot questions. I must have these to the town clerk tomorrow morning. Question one, which we may need to talk about with respect to the twenty-two thousand, that is a bit outside the, the bounds of public safety. The question has been revised from a couple of weeks ago. Shall the town of Templeton be allowed to assess an additional four hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of protecting the public safety, including the provision of fire services, advanced life support ambulance service, additional training of police officers beyond state minimums, a community notification system, supplemental funding of the snow and ice budget, and the associated costs of insurance and benefit programs. So we do have the highway fifteen and the insurance twenty-two, so I would say and miscellaneous, you know, I don't know how you want to add this, but
I think you have to add exactly what it is.
And other general government expenses.
Okay.
Well, I mean, highway really qualifies as public safety.
Yeah.
So I think it should be spelled out. And then the big chunk of that other section is the
Insurance and benefit programs. Why can't we just leave it at that?
I'm comfortable if you all are.
I am, it's insurance and benefit programs.
That's what it says, for insurance and benefit programs.
It's all the same, it's all, it's insurance and benefit.
It's all in there.
So if I was to slip the word after
Slip?
Be forced.
Could we maybe not use that?
Well, we're not talking about snow and ice, so I think slipping's
Oh, okay.
appropriate, they tie together.
I fell.
Oh, yes, I did hear you.
So if we were to place in front of the snow and ice budget words, just the phrase highway and snow and ice budgets.
Yes.
That would, I think, cover just about everything that's on the override.
Yes.
I think if you use the term miscellaneous, general, and general, it, it kind of sounds like a slush fund.
Yeah, I know, and I don't like that.
And I think it would be better to say, and medical insurance benefits.
Well, it says insurance and benefit programs.
It's already on there.
It's all together.
It's already on there.
Right, so with, with, you know, Doug's and Diane's suggestion that highway really is public safety, if we say supplemental funding of the highway and snow and ice budgets.
It's public safety.
I, I think that that really covers virtually everything that's in that override.
It's already, it's already said supplemental funding for snow and ice.
They want the word highway in there.
We want the word highway in there.
They'd like to slip the word highway in there.
Right, okay.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
I guess, okay. Do you have a motion on the table?
I'd like it read.
I make a motion to accept question one of the annual, what?
As amended?
As, as amended.
Okay. Vision one.
How much in ballot question?
Phil, ballot question for the amendment of actually importing highway in front of snow and ice or after snow and ice, I would assume?
I would do it in front of.
Great.
In front of.
Okay. In front of snow and ice. I have a motion with a second.
Second.
I have a motion with a second, any other discussion? I see done, Kim?
I'm staying.
Julie?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
The second proposed ballot question that you have been discussing is a supplemental debt exclusion to support the increase in the costs of the Templeton Police Station. That has been presented to you as question two and has not changed since it was presented a couple of weeks ago.
I make a motion to accept question two.
As written. Thank you.
I didn't finish, sorry.
Sorry, no, that's my fault, I didn't mean to interrupt. So question two as written, do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion with a second, any other discussion?
We're not including the dollar amount?
You don't include the dollar amounts in debt exclusions because you don't know what the annual principal and interest is until you actually float the bond.
Right.
The amount of the bond issue is in the warrant article. But you don't put it into
The ballot.
the ballot question.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion, do I, and a second, do I have any other discussion? Good question, no doubt. Julie?
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
That's a real good reason to have the town meeting first.
You took the words right out of my mouth, Doug. Yep.
I second that, Doug.
We're the only town that does it, the way we do it here, apparently. Let's have the cart before the horse. All right, so with that being said, I have a motion with a second, any other, no other discussion? I see done, Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
The next question, not so much, yeah, I guess it is a bit of a question. So I did get the review from town council on Article Five, which was the advisory board. I honestly have not had a chance to read through it today. But since then, we've had two articles discussed. The first one is whether or not to take another run at the election. And Doug and Carol, Harris and I met earlier. We discussed the opposition of going to June in some quarters. And so we had settled upon seeking to have the town election, had to stick to a Monday because of the district agreement, on the third Monday and to have the town meeting on the preceding Wednesday.
In May?
In May.
Understood.
It buys us potentially a week, depending upon the year. But if we can move the schools backwards to that March fifteen and then February fifteen, I've been beating the drum on. You actually, you'll be fine.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the municipal agreement that we have in place right now. Excuse me? Sorry. And then the agreement that we have in place right now with Philston is, it just has May.
It doesn't have a specific day in there.
It does have May, it has Monday.
Oh, okay.
If you look at where it is established, is in the petition to run for the school district.
Right.
And it says the election will be on a Monday and the month
I honestly go, I thought I said May.
You may be correct. I may have missed it. But where I have found it has been on this statement of the candidate.
Thank you.
And it speaks to the election being on Monday in the month of blank.
Oh, it is blank, okay.
You've got to move
Somebody must have filled it in somewhere.
Phillipson and moving them is going to be a challenge. Or you just make the change.
Understood. Do you want to say that?
But I think getting them to the first Monday of June. I mean, to the extent you can do this cooperatively, I think that's always best. And they were pretty clear they did not want to go along with June. So under the proposal that we discussed, the town election would be on the third Monday of May. And the town meeting would be on the preceding Wednesday, which if it needed to be adjourned, excuse me, recessed,
Right.
could be recessed to Thursday night.
I got you.
So you'd have two meeting nights, and then you have the news stories.
Right.
And we can
Yep. Chance will have fun with that.
The coffee shop.
Okay, so we get that.
I'd never have to go to a two-day town meeting. Three or four or five.
Four's been our longest.
All right, so
Four's five.
All right, so we have that being done. All right, so
So if you, if you want to add that to the warrant, I'd like to know. And then I will also draft a letter that can go to the folks in Phillipson for action at your meeting Monday night.
Okay. Now, obviously, you don't need a roll call vote for that, I don't believe, right?
Well, I would at least like a consensus from the board before I, if someone wants to make a motion.
I make a motion to add the election article to the warrant.
Okay, I have a motion now. Okay, great. So add the election article and to communicate with Phillipson, I would assume?
Okay, and to communicate with Phillipson.
Okay, because you, you are going to do a letter, correct?
For Monday night, for this body's approval, yes.
Okay, I have motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have motion for a second. Any other discussion considering that? I see none. Cam?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Julie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you for the motion, Diane.
What's next on the agenda there, Mr. Tenzini?
Mr. Forts had a question on the local bylaw and I, relative to the open air consumption of marijuana products, and I promised him I would have the chief here tonight to speak to it. Because if that is to be added to the warrant, I need to know that soon, quickly.
Okay. Table draws. Chief, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
I'm doing well.
So I am in favor of the local option bylaw. Okay, because the state, you do not have to cite the individual based off the state. You have two options. You have the state and you have the local option bylaw. I'm in favor of the three hundred dollars. I don't see it affecting anything. We have local option bylaw for open container. You don't see any negative repercussions off that for businesses. If the board, you do have the right to reduce the fine. If the board chooses to reduce the fine, you could reduce the fine. But I, I am in favor of having the local option.
Can you tell me how much revenue you generate off this citation of three hundred dollars?
I, I can't tell you because we haven't had it for marijuana consumption yet.
The, you've had this since 2011?
Not for, whoa, oh, okay, true. I can't tell you off the top of my head. I don't have that figure.
Okay.
But
How many, ballpark, how many?
Ballpark, maybe, maybe, three to five in a year, maybe.
Three to five in a year. So if we're talking additional three hundred, three to five, we'll do the generous ten. That's three thousand dollars to your budget if you do ten.
Well, not to mine, to the general fund.
Well, okay, to the general fund. Three thousand dollars. Now, once again, my concern for this, and it's often compared to alcohol. And I think alcohol, which has been legal since the dawn of time, really, I mean, there's very, very rarely been a time in anybody's history where they've made alcohol illegal, except for prohibition. And I think that's a, just a standard thing that we've thought about as a norm now. Where marijuana has not been a norm. And when we look at marijuana, businesses wanting to open up marijuana shops, or when we discuss marijuana in public, it's still a widely debated topic on what are the pros and the cons of this. And I don't want to go into any of those other political atmospheres, but the point is, is that Templeton, as we've had through this budget season, is struggling to find new revenue. And I'm not suggesting that we stop this, this state statute which says it's a hundred dollar citation on public land. My concern is, is that when we are harsher than our neighboring towns on marijuana, it shies business away. And I, I would be very curious to see what the polling was and the statistics were for the town to say, are people in favor of it or not in favor of marijuana? And I think we, we actually passed it on the ballot, or when we voted on the ballot, it was actually fifty-five percent in favor, forty-five percent against of those who did turn out to vote. So it was very close. The three thousand dollars that I generously said would be collected, I think, gives that idea that we are harsher on it than the surrounding areas. And once again, going full circle with business, if we can entice any sort of business in Templeton to give us any sort of money, I think it would give us more than that three thousand dollars if this had a positive effect. If it has no effect on business, then we're out three thousand dollars in our budget, and I don't see that as a significant impact. The other primary concern would be that people would be now smoking marijuana on public lands because it's only a hundred dollar citation. Well, I don't think the extra three hundred dollar citation is, is really in people's mind when they think about it. Because I don't know many people that really read the bylaws that are smoking marijuana on public lands because I think they would, they would just be a knucklehead to begin with. So with that in mind, state statute already covers exactly what that bylaw is, which is you cannot smoke it on state-owned or town-owned or any public land. And so it's very redundant. The only difference is that three hundred dollar citation. So once again, that's my piece with it, is if we strike it entirely, we lose out on three thousand dollars. We might have more business come into town because we are seen as a much more welcoming community to this, to the marijuana industry. I think Barry and Humbertson, one of the two towns, Chance might actually know, but was offered to have a research facility or it was a growth facility that was going to generate a large chunk of change. And they don't have any of these three hundred dollar citation laws, so. Just something to think about. I, it was something that I went out on a limb for. I was reading through the bylaws, and I said this might be a good time to strike it.
Right. Do you have a couple of questions?
Sure.
The open container bylaw fine, is it three hundred dollars also?
It's only a hundred.
It's only a hundred? Okay. Do you know, do any of our neighboring communities or communities that touch us have a local option marijuana bylaw?
I'm not aware of what the other votes are coming in. It's all, it's all
Right, I mean, everybody's under the state statute.
So.
Yes, I, I guess, you know, my opinion would be if we're only doing a hundred dollar fine for the open container, that seems reasonable for the marijuana also.
The only difference is that hundred dollars, well, we can bill as well as, I mean, or does that go right to the state?
That's state. You would get the, state would get the hundred dollars.
Right. So we'd still be losing. Yes?
Has anyone come forward to the town to want to start a business here? Because, I mean, I don't know there's a three hundred dollar bylaw. Do most people know that? You said you seemed to find it in the bylaws because you were going through them. I really don't. I would rather the town getting three hundred dollars and the state getting a hundred dollars.
This, this, so, oh, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
The, the only thing I can say is if you're going to open up a marijuana shop where the laws are still very hearsay, I, I would be fairly certain that anybody who's going to open up a pot shop is very well researched in this in distribution, cultivation, or retail sales. The, to open up a shop itself is fifteen thousand dollars just to apply for the license. So I would assume that anybody who's going to open up anything in any sort of town will read these bylaws. But this, this citation isn't really against businesses. It's just on smoking it in public.
Right. So wouldn't it be the same, like, we have an open container law, but that doesn't prevent people from selling alcohol in town? They don't look at it.
Any different?
Once again, and that, that's why I made this statement where it's, alcohol's been around for so long, and so people don't tread lightly. I mean, people don't think twice about opening up a bar, but when you open up a marijuana store, you have to think twice in the state of Massachusetts because it's so new. And you want to, you really want to gauge the atmosphere, and you don't want to be run out of town for opening up a pot shop that you spent fifteen thousand dollars, you know. So you want to gauge the environment, the atmosphere. That would be one of the key indexes.
I think you just, keep, keep it in with the, checking out the environment and the, you know, the industry and the population and the, and the people here in town. Maybe we should open up some, some public hearing debates, maybe, before any changes are made, so we can hear from the public first, maybe get some public input, and then see what they have to say. Is that, if that sounds reasonable to you?
Yeah, I was, like I said, it was just something that I was reading through, I felt it was redundant. I'd always come up to the special town meeting in November as well. The only, the only thing is, is that timing issue now is that July one is the start of the application. So we didn't form a moratorium. You can still open up a marijuana shop in Templeton if you wanted to. But that is going to be the initial push for applying for licenses and opening up businesses. July one is when they start releasing them.
Well, realistically, the stuff that we have in place right now is not really going to hinder the, the business process, I don't think, is it?
I, I would have no idea, but I know as, as somebody who's worked closely with acquisition and mergers, you do, you tend to do your research, and you tend to know where is it going to sell, who wants it. I mean, you're not going to open up a pot shop in a place where, you know, the laws are a little bit harsher because then you might get the, the idea that the environment, the people in that, the political atmosphere, they don't want to buy that marijuana, so.
Right, so we say. Well, we'll work on some, some open hearings, I guess. We can talk about that in the, in the very near future. Get some input from the people as far as that goes, so then, you know, we can work forwards, you know, with the progression going forward.
Yeah, we have time till the November, the fall town meeting, so.
Yep, that's good.
Might be a good time to see it.
Yep.
Okay, we'll put that on the work list for the fall.
Please, thank you.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing further tonight on the budget or the warrant unless there are questions from the
Do I still have any questions from Mr. Tenzini? Any questions? Do you have the, the proposal?
So the next item, Mr. Chairman. This, we're not asking you to take any action on this tonight. I suspect it'll be the subject of some discussion. I could see an amendment we need to make that slipped past us earlier today. You had asked us, and in conjunction with these departmental overviews, they include a table of organization, and this body had asked us to prepare an org chart for the community at large. So it's color-coded for a reason. So across the top, you have those bodies that are elected, such as yourself, or individual officers, such as the moderator, the town clerk. Then you can see under the moderators, the advisory committee, the staff for the town clerk. Under that, then you appoint the town administrator. You can see that that office has the two additional positions. Underneath the Board of Health is their pandemic response team, which is really not a committee. It's a group of, of staff and others that they simply appoint. Each working group, so the, the finance team, accountant, assessing, treasure collector, you can see they're color-coded the same. Development Services Office, you can see these are all color-coded, DPW. Community Services Team, you can see all these are color-coded to kind of show what unit they are. Off on the right-hand side, you can see the various boards and committees, whether they're appointed by the Regional School District or by this body, ranging from the Scholarship Fund Committee, the Stormwater Committee, capital planning, veterans, all of these individual committees that either need to communicate with or get some staff support.
Right.
We have taken and color-coded those committees the same as the unit that they would communicate through or receive their staff support. And then you can see these dash lines are to really sort of bring the point home. So for instance, the Cemetery and Parks Commission communicates with the DPW director, and he has to get some advice from them, in some cases, approval from them, and communicates with them. So this is, this is the draft that we give for you tonight. Discuss it, you know, at the next workshop. The lines from the, the school building committee probably need to be removed or rerouted. But other than that, that's the general essence of it. It does take a while to kind of look at it and get behind the, the concept around which it's organized. It's not a standard corporate org chart because this is, public sector is not a standard organizational style. So happy to answer any questions on it tonight. But again, as I say, maybe the best thing is to just take it in and, and think about it and, you know, talk to us about how, how it works and what it means and why we set it up this way. And there's always a possibility that we miss something. I mean, right up to the last minute, we miss something. We forget what committee it was, but, you know, we may have missed something.
Great. We'll make some notes and, can you get back to Mr. Tenzini with any questions, comments, run this? I'm sure he'll pass it all on to Eric, because Eric
Eric, Eric's been the, the driving force behind it and
Eric, it looks good.
Thank you.
Looks very good.
With that, Mr. Chairman, that is the only public, open public session business that I have for you this evening. However, I do need to request a executive session. Under Master and Law, Chapter Thirty, Section Twenty-one point three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with respect to locals one fifty-five and one fifty-five A. I do not anticipate you taking any votes in public session when we come out of that executive.
Okay.
I certainly don't have any to ask you for.
Understood. Do I have, can I motion, please?
I vote.
So I have a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? I see none. Diane? Doug?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Cam?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you all for coming.